... agenda, so I will call the meeting to order, a roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Here.
Yeah, here.
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 We have a quorum.
Before we just start on the discussion items, tomorrow is obviously nine eleven and a couple of things to read out whilst we have a full house. One of our residents had written something back in 2021, Bob Noah, "The Honor Trail. Of all the placid times, we love to talk and play with family and friends we still recall the day. Remember when we laughed despite the daily grind before the world collapsed the month of number nine? But chaos always calls the best of us to hear the writing on the wall despite our natural fear. And of those special ones who live to tell the tale, we stand and band together along the honor trail. It's history and heart preceding generations that plant glory seeds to flag our favored nation. And all the occupants who witness travesty can thank those who respond to keep us safe and free. A week, a month, an hour, the clock will tick away, but quiet stops the minutes when we recall the day. Our lives will come and go, but futures will remind the shadow of eleven, the month of number nine." Robert John Noah. And then the Fergus Falls Fire Department is having a remembrance ceremony tomorrow. The Fire Department Honor Guard will conduct details at the following times in front of the fire station in memory of those who lost their lives, in honor of those who responded in the aftermath, and those who continue to protect our freedom to this day. Public is welcome to join in remembrance and honor in front of the fire station as well. At oh seven forty-six, hijackers deliberately crashed American Airlines Flight eleven into floors ninety-three through ninety-nine of the North Tower of the World Trade Center. At oh eight oh three, hijackers deliberately crashed United Flight one seven-five into floors seventy-seven through eighty-five of the South Tower. Oh eight thirty-seven, hijackers deliberately crashed American Airlines Flight seventy-seven into the Pentagon near Washington, D.C. Oh fifty-nine, the South Tower collapses. Oh nine oh three, after learning of other attacks, passengers on United Flight ninety-three launched a counterattack on hijackers aboard their plane to try to seize control of the aircraft. In response, the hijackers crashed the plane into an empty field near Shakerville, Pennsylvania. Oh nine twenty-eight, the North Tower collapses. The sixteen-acre World Tower Trade Center site is in ruins, with collateral damage affecting all adjacent properties and streets. A rescue and recovery effort begins immediately. I think we all remember nine eleven and probably where we were and what we were doing. So, thank you to the Fire Department for all you do and first responders. So, with that, we will move on to the agenda. The first item is Friends of the Airport update, and I'll call upon Sandra to go through a few slides and give an update to the council on all things that have been happening at the airport.
Hey, good morning. I'm not entirely sure about following all that, but the airport update, but it's, it is what it is.
Yeah, it's.
Good morning, all. Nice to see you. It's been a while since I've been up here with an airport update, I think, so this is kind of nice. The, ooh, I gotta click this button. Thank you. I know how to do that. Oh, no. Remember what I said?
Uh-uh.
Nice. I can do it again. I'll try. Hey, the Fergus Falls Airport, located on seven hundred and thirty acres, we have a main terminal building of fifteen thousand square feet. Ten thousand of that is hangar storage for the main building. We have an SRE building, built in two thousand and eight. That's where we stored the snow removal equipment. There are seventeen city-owned teehangers and twenty-two private hangars. Oh my goodness. I'm gonna need you, I think. That sounds super good. When I flip a page, you'll go on to the next thing. Thanks. I can fly an airplane, but I can't do this. Thanks.
Well, we have.
Yeah. It takes a whole bundle of us to keep the airport running. SkyQuest Services, there is six of us there. There's the Friends of the Airport group, a couple of them are here today, and we meet monthly to come up with brilliant thoughts to make everything better. EAA, also represented here today, Robbie. Nordic Plains, it's a new training company that just started, we'll talk a little bit more about that. And there's so many other people that partake virtually daily. Thank you. Forty-three aircraft are based in the airport right now. We have some jet power, some twins, some single engines, some other stuff. I won't bore you with model numbers and all of that, but they're all nice airplanes. In two thousand twenty-four, there were just under seventy-five hundred operations at the airport. This number is expected to grow. This comes off our master plan study to nine thousand. I think it's gonna be a lot more than that. Those numbers, how they get compiled, I think that growth is actually gonna significantly exceed that. That master plan, it's not completed yet. They're working on it right now. I think we're due to final stage. There's some cost here that, the total planned cost, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five percent was covered by the city, the rest was covered elsewhere. So, I think that's pretty nice. Our master plan, it definitely supports growth, so it's not just my personal opinion that the airport is doing great and gonna be doing better. I think they all agree. A couple of things that we have to do to anticipate that growth is preserve the runway environment that's there right now, and there's a couple of things that will need to take place to ensure a proper future operation, so that the FAA is in line with, or happy, the FAA needs to be happy, that's what it is. There is a crosswind runway right now. Many airports are losing their crosswind runway, so we have two runways. They're expensive to maintain. We have demonstrated to need both of those runways, which is pretty fantastic for us. The, this runway in the, in the, well, not too distant future, will actually have to be moved a little bit. That'll be a whole thing. We'll eventually talk about that, but it has to be moved sideways for a variety of reasons. I'll flip, sorry. I'm getting the hang of this. A couple of things that have been done, main runway reseal, that's been done the last couple of years, was a big project. It'll protect the runway for at least another decade or more before it needs to be done again. The runways are in pretty fantastic shape, so we'll keep working on that. The AWAS, it's an automated weather observation system. It got replaced. The other one was very old, and this one is now pretty awesome and new, and it'll stay and it'll be good. It'll be good for another twenty years at least. It was a hundred percent funded by the state, so that's pretty sweet. One of the biggest improvements is we have a new fuel system. The total cost that was eight hundred grand, just a little bit over, thirty percent of it got funded locally. It desperately needed it, and now it's good for twenty-five years or more again, so it'll be, it's really nice. It made some, it made significant change at the airport to have that. We need additional storage probably, so all of our hangars are full to date. In the last four and a half years, five years, we were able to fill every vacant space. There is no more space. We have people on the waitlist right now to, to, they wanna come, but we can't house them quite yet. So, we definitely need a little bit more room. It's a combination of things. People that have airplanes that live here locally, they need aircraft storage year round, and then we have people that come here that fly through here. We just need a place to park for the night, or two nights or three nights. Those guys. That's a full hangar right there. We love seeing that. That particular night, and the reason we took that picture, is because we could not fit. There is nothing that could fit in there. Matter of fact, it was too full. The transient aircraft, we have bigger aircraft that come through here that wanna stay here. We can't house them currently. It's a, it's something that we will work, or we will look for a solution for sooner than later. A lot of those airplanes that you see in there, they, they have a price tag starting at five, six million dollars and up, so people get protective of that, and they wanna make sure that they're parked inside when they come visit. So, if we have a place for them to hang out, they will come visit. We continuously add new services and kind of try to find a good balance of things, so people keep, people stay and they visit. One of the big things we did is add aircraft maintenance. That's a new thing to us. Well, it's back again. We used to have it many years ago. It's back again. We get new customers every day, and it's definitely growing. That's Bob Hart at work there, and I think he's pretending to work, to be fair, in this picture. Flight instruction, we, Nordic Plains, the folks I talked about earlier, they are new to us. They are absolutely fantastic. They are providing flight training for all stages of flight, and right now, what they're doing is they have an accelerator program, and they, for this month, they have three students coming from out of state. They'll stay here for an average two, week to two weeks. One of the guys is coming from Hawaii, so that's kind of neat. So, they're definitely attracting some new people to town. They will get their private pilot license in two weeks if they come, which is super fast, but it's quite immersive, so. And it's fun to tease those guys, because, you know, kind of put a little pressure on them. One of the things we put in the airport is a Redbird Flight Simulator. It's fully certified. You can definitely train in it, and it's big. I don't have a picture here, I think, that shows how big it is, but you can sit in it, you can see the inside of it there. It flies like a real airplane. It's not a video game, although my kid's treated as such, but it's not. It's, it's a tool. The Flight School will make good use of that as well, for sure. Here's the old lobby. That's what it looked like when we first walked in the door, and today, with the help of the city, we did fifty-fifty. We changed it into that, and this is our, our calling card. We get lots of people that are very happy and are very comfortable when they come visit us. All in all, I think the airport is heading in the right direction, for sure. Main community events, we do a Belgian waffle feat, that's through the EAA, actually, so Robbie there, the, the main guy. It gets about a thousand people every time. The EA members annually fly three hundred kids out of Fergus Falls, and I think another three hundred away from Fergus Falls. So, we get lots of use from, they introduce a lot of kids to aviation through that channel. And then the Santa Fly-NCs, about four hundred people every year. I think that's about it. We got some thoughts coming up here, maybe to help ease the burden of expenses at the airport with, maybe possibly discussing, I transitioned to a regional airport away from a municipal airport. I don't have near enough time to get into those details, but today, which is probably good, because you guys have a lot on your plate. We have, we'll talk more about it later. So, the main, our main focus right now is expansion for hangar space. That's, we'll be after that, for sure. We need it desperately. I think that's about it, and if anybody has any questions, I can answer. Airshow. Oh my goodness. Airshow. We have an airshow next year. So, yeah, it's, thank you. Jeez, it was in my mind. June twenty-seventh, we have an airshow. The last airshow in Fergus, I don't know when it was, but it was, I think, in the eight, do you remember when it was?
I don't.
Eighties, late eighties? It was before I got here, so late eighties. We're very excited about that. We will definitely share more details about that as time goes on. So, am I forgetting anything? Is there something?
I think the, the other thing would be the name change. In, in alignment of kind of looking at getting regional airport status, one of the things that will come before the council, be a resolution requesting that we change the name from Municipal Airport to Regional Airport. It doesn't affect anything with the FAA, but it does give the, the aura that we are a regional airport versus being a municipal one. And as we're looking for economic growth as a city, you know, the broader that we, we look, you know, externally, the better, better off we are. And so, that's kind of one, one thing that will be, there'll be a resolution in the packet regarding name, name change for the airport. And then, obviously, we are having discussion on regional airport status, and we did get word that there's a possibility of a grant to, in order to do, to do that. So, that's something else we're pursuing. We have a meeting with PERAM on, you know, whether they would be, you know, game for doing that. The basis of becoming a regional airport status would mean that, as, as it sits today, the total cost of Fergus Falls Municipal Airport is borne by the residents of Fergus Falls. If we become a regional status and regional airport status, then, and that's where we need, like, PERAM, obviously, the, the cost then of the airport would get spread across the county, the county residents, rather than just, a lot of the aircraft that do come in and out are not just coming to, to Fergus. I think the other thing that didn't get, get mentioned was that, since the new fuel system, we, the fuel in Fergus is, you know, one of the cheapest in the area, and there are a lot of transient flights that will literally just stop and fill up. And, and that's, that's adding to that traffic number, and I think, you know, the one thing that Sandra kind of probably did, you know, on, on one of the pages, it should have said that, like, how much since 2020, there's been a fifty percent growth in, in airport traffic. And again, if we're going to attract, you know, external investors to the community, the airport in general is probably one of the first things that, that people will see, and how they get treated when they, when they arrive, means a big deal, I know from my time at Green Plains. You know, that was a big thing. They like to fly places, and as Sandra said, you know, these aircraft are five, six million dollars apiece. They don't like leaving them outside, especially in the winter, you know, when it's hailing. So, and, and again, we've looked at a hangar and, and through both MINDOC Aviation and through our consultants, SEH, and there's potential that, a hangar costs about a million dollars, and we've, we believe that there's a program out there where we can get about ninety-five percent of that cost covered between federal and state. So, you know, we as a community, we'd have to come up with, you know, about fifty thousand dollars for a million dollar hangar, but that would add, obviously, considerable storage to the airport, and already, there's kind of one person that's got like a fourteen million dollar plane that would like to store it here, but won't because there's nowhere to put it. So, there's a lot of positive things that happened at the airport, and since, since the change, and I would encourage any, any and all of you to try to go out there at some point and just look around to see, you know, the things that have, have happened since, since these guys took over. You know, I mean, the Flight School is a big deal, you know, that just adds, you know, traffic, and like Sandra said, you know, just this month alone, there's three people that are from out of state, gonna stay in the community for two weeks, that, you know, we wouldn't have had before. I think it's, it's a little hidden gem at this point in time that we don't acknowledge very, very much. So, any questions to Sandra?
Scott?
And at least go out there for the waffles, right?
Yeah.
Also on our agenda today is the surplus vehicle that used to be, or maybe still is as of this minute, a vehicle that was used as a shuttle or a courtesy vehicle out there. And just because it's on the agenda, what's the plan to replace that, or maybe you already have?
There is, it has been replaced already. I, I, I don't know the inner workings of how that works, but when we look outside, we magically see vehicles appear, which makes us very happy.
The, the, the old courtesy vehicle was a Ford Windstar that was, it seemed better days. And again, coming back to that, you know, first, first appearance, you know, most, most airports have courtesy vehicles for pilots and, and, you know, passengers to kind of use if it's just short, short trips here into town or whatever. And the Ford Windstar was, seemed better days, and the city had a, a surplus vehicle minivan that was used in the pool for City Hall, and we didn't need that, obviously, anymore. It was surplus to requirements, so it was a slightly better vehicle. So, basically, it got moved to the airport, and the Ford Windstar is gonna go on the auction block and see better days somewhere else. But it was a good vehicle. I mean, it ran. I mean, it didn't, it wasn't a, it wasn't a money pit from a breakdown perspective.
Many happy customers in that vehicle. They could use every day, the courtesy cars, actually, both of them do.
Sanders, I welcome your presentation.
Thank you.
I've been watching this committee for this, for a while, and I, this is the first time I've seen you in front of us. Thank you very much. The hangar space, I appreciate. I feel that's very important. Welcome Nordic Training, very nice. The simulator, let me back up to the hangars. If you put up another hangar, are they rented when it's overnight, or is this just an accommodation?
Yeah, they, they rent them by the night.
Okay.
It's kind of, it's much like a hotel room.
Yep.
We include services with that, whatever they require, but.
So, it's not a, a negative revenue. It, there's actually, if you put up this million dollar new hangar, there is revenue generated.
Correct, yeah, it's, it's a revenue generating.
Yep. The simulator, is that just for pilots, or are you renting that out to, just to John Doe that comes in and says, "I wanna see if I can crash this seven thirty-seven"?
Yeah, so it, it, that's why I said it was not a video game, because we, but it's gonna be rented by anybody. So, it's, it's, it's not like, it's not designed for kids, if that makes sense, so, but for that, other than that, yeah, as long as you're, if, if we can just demonstrate it to you, then anybody can operate it, and it has some great programming in it that you can spend some time in it as a non-pilot, and you can actually fly it quite well. It's quite realistic, it's full motion.
Yep.
It's, 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 it's really nice. So, you're welcome to come use it. If anybody wants to come use it, we will hook you up.
The lobby is beautiful.
Say that again?
The lobby is beautiful.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're very happy with it.
And the events that you're bringing in, I, I commend you. It's a great asset for Fergus Falls.
Thank you.
I just got one. Sandra, you and I talked about the name change.
Yes.
And of course, I had a constituent ask about the Einar Mikulson name.
Einar Mikulson, yeah.
If that was gonna be removed, and you assured me that that was still gonna be part of the history, and is it still gonna be part of the namesake, or is it?
So, my personal opinion is that it should not be part of the name, because it gets really long, that name. Einar Mikulson, when we were talking, you know, and, and that's the way you said it right now, it's incredibly hard for people to remember that name, and it, it has no meaning on just paper, so when somebody reads that name, they, they, they don't know quite what to do with it. I believe we should have a, a recognition at the airport for Einar Mikulson, but I do not believe it should be recognized in the name. It's, it's quite cumbersome to, to navigate, also just on, if you just look at a navigational chart, it says that full name on there. I believe that if we're gonna go to a regional airport, that it, a short name is endlessly better for everybody.
And I believe that they just wanted to make sure it wasn't forgotten, they use a World War II vet aircraft.
Yeah, part of the Flying Tigers. Without a doubt, it should have representation at the airport, and we have, I think we have some nice thoughts to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Otter Tail Valley Railroad Signal Replacement Project CP nine seven seven six, Grant Cooper from Moltenham Bank. The request in action is a recommendation to the council to accept the construction and maintenance agreement between the city and Otter Tail Valley Railroad Company and accept funding agreement one zero six one zero one one between the city and MINDOC versus city project nine seven seven six. With that, good morning, Grant.
Good morning, thanks, Mayor Hicks. Yeah, just a little background on this. So, at the Freiburg Crossing, it requires a railroad crossing extension, so the sidewalk has to meander around the new signal to accommodate that for spacing requirements. So, we have to extend the crossing surface, and that is something that Otter Tail Valley Rail takes care of, and then they essentially build the city, because they say this is a city project for a city extension. MINDOC has then turned around and said, "We will reimburse the city for those costs." So, the crossing extension project, or, or portion of the project through Otter Tail Valley Rail, that agreement is for ninety thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars. MINDOC's reimbursement is for a hundred and ten thousand dollars, and that, that funding above and beyond is meant to just further fund the contingency for the project. So, MINDOC's been very good to work with in providing additional funds to make sure there's no local costs for this. Yeah, so as Mayor Hicks said, just looking for a resolution to accept the construction maintenance agreement with Otter Tail Valley Rail, and then accept the funding agreement for the city of Fergus Falls, between the city of Fergus Falls and MINDOC. Any questions for me?
Can somebody care to make that motion?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Laurel. Any, any questions of Grant? Maybe other than an update on when the work is likely to start, and will it get completed this season?
Yeah, so we're anticipating starting after Labor Day. We are still waiting on a right-of-entry permit, so essentially, the railroad provides a right-of-entry permit to work within the right-of-way. We do not have that yet, and I do not have a date as to when that's gonna come. It comes through the real estate department, which is challenging to get an answer out of them. Worst-case scenario is that the project would get pushed to next spring. I, if it doesn't come in the next week or two, like, I'm hesitant to open up that with how late it is in the season, and not get a quality product from a road standpoint. We all know the weather can turn pretty quickly, so I've been in touch with Kyle, with Andrew on that, and, yeah, we'll see when it comes through. I don't have a date as to when that will come through.
Thank you. Any other questions?
How long have you been trying to get that permit?
I submitted it as soon as the bid was accepted in June, and it said eight to twelve weeks. It said six to eight weeks on the application when I submitted it. They said their lead time was eight to twelve weeks in the response email. So, I submitted it as soon as you guys accepted the, the bid.
All right, thank you. And with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. And the motion is approved. Everybody good with putting that on the consent agenda for Monday evening? All right, thank you. The next item of, on the agenda and the main show for today, main event, is Bill Somner with the 2026 Preliminary Budget and the recommendation to the council to approve the 2026 Preliminary Budget, and this will, this will really go on the agenda on Monday for, for the discussion.
Morning, thank you, Mayor, City Council. I can't believe how fast a year goes, and it seems like I was just standing here, and I say that every year. You could almost replay it, and we say the same thing, but we are here, just like the mayor said, to bring you the preliminary budget. Make sure, let's see what I can do with this. So, Lynn, I'm hitting the arrow down, but you do that too? Awesome. I'm gonna just move it out of the way. And a big thanks to Lynn, she built the presentation for me, so she knows this about as well as I do, so that is great, so we'll flip through these, but. So, the timeline, this, we'll talk a little bit about preliminary budget here, but the staff started the process back in May, late May, really through June, preparing budget requests. Those come into the finance area, we then compile a budget out of that, and then the tax levy committee started meeting in July. The tax levy committee this year is composed of our mayor, council member Layton, councilperson Laura Jobe, and Andrew Bramsath. So, that's your tax levy committee this year, has been meeting since July on this budget. We are here September tenth to present this proposed. It'll go on Monday night's council meeting, and we have to have that to Otter Tail County by the end of September, so that's, we run on a state statute calendar by all that, because Otter Tail County needs it, so they can then get the information in their system, get it out in tax statements later this fall. Then we'll come back in September now through December. Tax levy committee wants to continue to work on this budget. This is by no means a complete This is by no means a completed budget, this is preliminary. I'll say upfront, we're coming in higher than anyone on the committee wanted to do with the goal of bringing that down by December. And if you hit replay on prior years, that's exactly what we've said in the past too. We're coming here, we still have more work to do, we wanna bring that levy down by December is the goal. I think the tax levy committee would agree with, with that statement. So then in December, we will have a public meeting, December first is our first council meeting of that month. We will have our truth and taxation process that night where we have an, um, a chance for the public to comment as well. You as a city council, if you are happy with it at that point, you could approve it on December first and then we would get it to Ottertail County by the end of December. If we needed to continue that hearing, you could have that, um, on December fifteenth, the second council meeting. You'll make that decision on December first when we have that hearing and if you're ready to approve it or not that night. Okay, so we wanna lay out what are some of our cost drivers? What is, what is, um, driving the cost in the budget this year? So I will say up to about a week and a half ago, we were in pretty good shape. Uh, the tax levy committee felt pretty good where we were coming in and then we got our health insurance numbers. And you'll see number one on the top of here, our health insurance increase is twenty-four point nine percent increase. We'll have a slide later about what HR is busy doing, working on that process, but we did just learn those numbers. We put them in here again, so we're gonna come in a bit higher and then work on this process through the fall. But health being a big driver, again, we'll have more detailed slides on that. Wages, we have settled contracts for twenty twenty-six, so three and a half percent wage change there. Electric, four percent, our city utilities, four, natural gas, eight. Um, we work with Ottertail Power and Great Plains to get those two estimates and I put in the estimate for the utilities. We will, um, go through our utility funds, do rate studies this fall, bring that back to you later. I didn't spend a lot of time on the utility funds at this point getting the budget together. Liability insurance, property, auto, you can see all of those at seven, nine, and ten. I get those estimates from the League of Minnesota Cities. If we can find out more information by December, we will update those as well. Our internal equipment rent at five percent, so that's where all the different departments pay the equipment fund. Uh, rental for, you know, replacement of equipment, operation of equipment, all the fuel costs are in that. Um, the mechanics, you know, all the, all the work on equipment. And then workers' comp, we have a estimate of three point five percent. I do expect to know that number before December. We had that last year. When we do our renewal in the fall, the league gets back to us almost instantaneously with that renewal, which is good. Okay, next slide. So the proposed budget for twenty-six, we have proposed revenues of just over fifty-nine million, proposed expenditures at fifty-six million five hundred thousand. The proposed tax levy as of today is nine million two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. That's a seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar increase from twenty twenty-five or eight point five three percent. Again, that's higher than what the tax levy would like to see. Couple of weeks ago, we were at about six and a half percent. We were planning to come in until we got those health insurance numbers. So again, coming in, we can always bring it down by December, but we can't go above this amount, so we're setting the max today. Okay, the proposed budget is broke down between the general fund, that's our general operating fund of the city, you can see that amount at seventeen point two. Our various special revenue funds, that would have your port authority, the RTC maintenance fund, the library, the Bigwood Center, all our tax abatement districts and TIF districts and our various, um, revolving loan funds all fall in there. Debt service funds, that's where we make our bond payments out of. Capital projects funds, we build projects there. We also have a number of, um, funds within there where we collect the property tax levy, um, and special assessments that are used to make those debt service funds. So in here, if you dig into the book that's on your desk, you'll see transfers between capital projects and, um, debt service funds. That's how that flows. We hold the money over here in capital projects, move it when it's time to make a bond payment over here. Enterprise funds, that's your liquor store, refuse, sewer, water, stormwater, um, all run like a private business, um, where the user charges support that. And then internal service funds, that's that equipment, um, central garage fleet. So those are total revenues and expenses, just it broke down a little more detail. Here we have charts that show the allocation on the, the citywide basis. You can see we're pretty consistent, um, like charges for services, forty-one, down to forty percent, intergovernmental, up a little bit. Um, that's more so on our capital project side, based on the projects we're doing using state and federal aids for streets, for example. We have more of that in twenty twenty-six. Property taxes, you can see as a portion of the pie, is staying pretty stable. If you go to our audit reports as well, you'll see that same look of that chart on our actual results where we stay pretty consistent on those slices of the pie. Um, and then the various others, you can see the transfers in, they're talked about. Part of that as well is those enterprise funds paying into the general fund, um, large amount of transfers. It's based on expenditures, um, for those businesses, so sewer, water, storm, they're paying their rightful, um, share of technology, um, HR payroll, things that they're getting serviced for, they need to pay their fair share of that. It's coming in in the form of transfers. The liquor store also makes a transfer to the general fund that really is like a gift to the general fund to bring property taxes down, so that's part of that as well. Okay, the expenditures, same story here, um, very similar on expenditures. You will see this in the audit reports as well. You can see, you know, capital outlay going from twenty-five to twenty-four percent, that's the projects we're doing. Personnel, twenty-seven percent, it stayed exactly the same amount of the, um, slice of the pie. Utilities throughout, we just wanna show that to show the consistency between years, kinda where our resources are going. So you can go to the next slide. How are tax rates, um, computed? So when we look at that tax levy, um, this, we've had this slide in every year, but it's a good reminder. Ottertail County Assessor determines the value of property. And then we have class rates in Minnesota that are applied to that market value. That, then that becomes your tax capacity, so your market value times the class rate then gives you the tax capacity number. The city of Fergus Falls, you establish the amount of the levy, um, as a flat dollar, so it's not based on market values. You determine we need nine point three million dollars to operate the city as a whole. Then the county applies that against the tax capacity to come up with a rate and then they use that to calculate individual property tax statements. So again, we're setting the flat dollar amount, then Ottertail County will spread that over all the parcels in the city. Okay, fixed costs, so what is driving our cost? Put these little charts together. You can see, um, from a personnel standpoint, we have our contracts and steps, um, health insurance, again, this three forty-four, five hundred, that is the levy-supported funds. We'll have another slide that also adds in those enterprise funds that even brings that, shows the whole picture for the city as a whole, but we wanted to say here, our goal is what is impacting the levy from fixed cost drivers? Um, we have some overlap in the police chief time. We have an election next year, we didn't have one this year, so we put that money back in the budget. Um, we made some personnel allocation changes that actually brings it down. Um, things like the street department, park and rec, where we have our various people that, you know, work where needed. I always look at the history of that, um, when I'm setting that budget. So if I'm looking, okay, this trend is down a little bit, they're not working in, in parks quite as much, I'm gonna decrease that budget a bit based on what we're actually seeing. That's why those allocations change. Um, the equipment rental, that's the five percent figure, so that's eighty thousand nine nine seven. We have a new bond going on, um, for the ones we just issued this summer for the Junius Project and Shoreview, that's an annual levy of fifty-nine thousand. Other debt service, we were able to bring down twelve thousand dollars, so we bring that factor in. Insurance going up twelve thousand, utilities down forty-two five. Um, we are seeing lower utility costs at the community arena, um, and a few other places. Um, arena being one of the larger ones, um, our electrical costs are down there. We've talked about that in the past because remember, we decreased the arena rates as well, a bit. That's the driver for, you know, we moved some staff out of the arena and we saw utilities going down, able to, um, you know, we decreased the budget likewise then. And then our tax abatement program's going down fifty-seven thousand five, the big driver of that is the housing rebate program. As I projected out, it looked, you know, people are gonna be meeting that five thousand dollar tax abatement, so now they're gonna start falling off, so we're gonna see that program start to wind down. So we were able to decrease that levy from, you know, eighty-eight thousand down to, I think, about thirty or thirty thousand something. So the net impact of all those costs is nine hundred and eleven thousand, that is, um, increased cost. That would mean, that would be a ten point six six levy increase. Well, we're coming in at eight point five three, so something had to bring that down, right? So on the right side, you can see, we outsourced engineering and GIS to more engineering. We are saving a hundred and forty-three thousand nine seventy-eight in the general fund because of that action. Um, we eliminated the communications position and most of that department, we left some money in for communications, but that's bringing down one forty-nine, one thirty-five. Restructured the human resources department, brought that down a bit, so that net impact now comes down to five fifty-one, nine fifty-one, or it would be a six point four six percent increase of the levy. So fixed cost drivers, maybe a little extra detail and need a little water. So, next slide. Okay, a little more on the health insurance. You can see in total for the city now, all funds of the city, not just levy-supported. We have a budget of two point five million, up from just over two million dollars, so the total increase for health insurance would be five hundred and two thousand dollars for twenty twenty-six. Um, we, showing you the breakdown between levy and other funds. On the next slide, what are we doing about that? So our new HR manager is, she jumped right on it the minute we got those, um, exploring competitive options, you know, have been reaching out to other companies, looking at other options for that, learning from our peers, what are others doing? How are they dealing with health insurance? We're certainly not the only one. Jim?
You mentioned the twenty-four point nine, but we have to remember that last year we had a zero increase.
I think it was two years we were at zero and last year were we seven point six five, I think.
I thought we were zero last year.
I'd have to dig back, but certainly we, we did have, either in the last couple of years, we did have a zero.
Yep.
Now, our rate would have actually been higher than twenty-four point nine, I believe, but with the pool, it brought it down to twenty, I can't believe I'm saying down to twenty-four point nine, but, so it's, we've got work to do. Alicia is exploring that, um, looking at new programs, certainly there's always ways to, we look at our current offerings, those kind of things, so. And then forming a review committee, we've done this before, um, we went through this, Alicia, do you remember what year we had an increase like this?
Yep, it was twenty twenty-one.
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen, yes.
Twenty fifteen?
Twenty twenty-one.
Where we had a really big one, it was probably about twenty-five percent back at that time.
It was.
Um, we form kind of an insurance committee at that time with representatives from all the union groups, um, you know, to, because we have to all work together on this and work with our unions to do that. So that'll be in the works as well, so wanted to let you know, HR is off and running on that, trying to see what we can do and certainly working with Lakes Country Service Co-op, that's where we purchase our insurance, working with them as well. Okay, the general fund side, um, revenue sources. You can see here comparisons, so we show the taxes going up, licenses and permits down just a little bit, building permits are down a bit, mechanical permits, so I brought that estimate down just a little bit. Grants and aids down a bit here, um, I'll have another slide on that explaining in a little more detail. Charges up a bit there, other, you know, pretty close. Transfers down a little bit, again, we talked about how those are based on, you know, expense side and, um, where enterprise funds need to pay in for their fair share. Use of fund balance going up a lot there. Now, let's see if I can do this by memory. Um, we are transferring two hundred and sixty thousand out of the general fund, out of fund balance, for street projects. It's what we talked about when, um, Kyle and Josiah went through the capital improvement plan, that would be using some parking lot dollars and other street dollars, um, for the alley and parking lot project that we'll be looking at. Um, and, you know, will that get rolled in with another project? We'll see, but in the CIP, we have that we would use some of our accumulated fund balance, so you transfer it out of the general fund, well then, on the revenue side, I'm pulling it out of the savings account, cause it's a one-time expense, that's why it's showing up in the six forty-three. Um, energy transition aid, I know it's on a slide, but we'll talk about it now. We received like two hundred and fifty-six thousand this year of energy transition aid. I had budgeted two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Under our calculations last year, that should go down to about two hundred and forty-three. We were under the understanding that would phase out over twenty years, five percent a year dropping down. All the cities that received energy transition aid for the first time in twenty twenty-five are being eliminated next year, per the formula. So we got on the phone with Department of Revenue, with our legislative consultant and other cities as well that are experiencing this, so we need a legislative fix on that, cause the intent always was for it to be a long-term transition. So we put two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in this use of fund balance, in the hopes that that comes back next year. Now, if it doesn't, we'll have to deal with this next year, but I am hopeful that we'll get that legislative fix in place and bring that back, but, so not raising a levy to cover that this year, we'll use fund balance, but we need to work on getting that reinstated so that revenue source can be back in next year, so we would move it from use of fund balance back over to state grants and aids, is my hope. So we'll see where that goes, but we're hard at work on that. We also have about ninety-five thousand in there for, um, our police chief overlap time as well, since that's an expense that will go away. Again, it won't be ongoing, so I have that in use of fund balance. And forty-five thousand using public safety aid that we have in the bank to fund our school, elementary school resource officer. We've done that over the last two or three years and the plan was for like twenties, twenty-five and twenty-six to continue, so. Inner government revenues, we talked about the generation aid right now. Local government aid going up, um, you know, just under eleven thousand or point two four percent. In other words, it's staying stable, so when you have increasing costs elsewhere, but LGA is a major funding factor for us, staying pretty level, that means all those costs go towards the levy side, cause cities are funded through property tax levies and intergovernmental aids and if, you know, some charges, but those are our big sources, so I wanted to point out LGA's, I'm glad it's staying the same, not going down or anything, but boy, would it be nice if that was increasing at the same rate of inflation increasing on our expense side. And then we're getting new aid from Ottertail County for right-of-way maintenance, so forty-nine thousand five hundred, that's new going into the budget as a new revenue source. The expense side, general government, we're decreasing expenses in our general government, so like that communications position, that's pulled out of there, that's a driver there of bringing that down. You can see public safety is probably where our largest increase in our tax levy budgets are happening is, is, um, you know, police department is our largest budget at like five point six million dollars, so by nature, you know, the increases follow there. Streets and highways, um, up a bit there, we did increase funding in our, um, street materials, mill and overlays, and seal codes. We have a slide on that that shows where we're at with those. Airport, pretty stable, park and rec, um, just going up slightly, um, keeping things pretty level there, um, nothing too major. Community and economic development going up, we're adding new economic development services, we have a new budget of a hundred and sixty thousand in here for that. So that's why you see that chart going up. And Lynn, what was the last one on there? Transfers out, we talked about that, two sixty going over to capital projects using fund balance for pavement. Okay, next one. Showing the, um, expenses again now from budget to budget for just the general fund and you can see like streets and highway staying exactly at twenty percent, consistent there. Public safety from thirty-nine up to forty-one percent. General government, instead of eighteen percent, we're going down to sixteen percent on that and you can see the other allocation, so just for, just a way to break it down for you. Um, let's see, we talked about these, um, communications position, our election, legal fees, we're in year two of year three of a phased adjustment, we restructured HR and we reduced the, um, IT budget a bit. Um, we are now have gone to virtual servers, don't ask me how it works, but we're saving money on it and we also have then ongoing external maintenance, so I think that's a win, decreasing costs and having help maintaining that, so. Next slide. Police, uh, we talked about the five point six million dollar budget, we have twenty-six licensed sworn police. We have twenty-six licensed sworn police officers, five admin records techs, so one admin, four records techs, and we have that police chief overlap for a part of the year. Our fire department at a one point two million dollar budget. We have three full-timers and thirty-nine paid on-call firefighters. And, we did increase the savings we're putting into for that future fire truck and other fire trucks as well. So to two hundred and thirty, two forty-five, I know we, so just for the fire truck line, we're up to two hundred and five thousand is what we're putting in for that. Streets and highways, we have three point two million dollar budget in twenty-twenty-six. Engineering is sixty-two thousand of that. We have a hundred and thirteen thousand dollar, five hundred dollar savings that we reduced that engineering budget. And I want to point out, remember, we'll have additional savings as we do projects, because the percentage we're paying on design and construction, administration and whatnot is, you know, that fifteen percent, which less is, less than we were paying. So, we will continue to see other savings. And then GIS, we reduced, I'm not budgeting anything for GIS because that flows in with more engineering contract as well. So we reduced that another thirty thousand five hundred. With that more engineering contract, I did spread those costs out over like the water, the sewer, the stormwater, because our engineering department was working on stormwater management, which more engineering is working with that. And also, of course, they, you know, they're working on our utility funds as well, so we're spreading that cost over all those funds. Pointing out, we have ninety thousand for street materials, three fifty for the overlays and seal coat, two hundred thousand. So we brought each one of those up a bit for twenty-twenty-six from twenty-twenty-five. Parks and rec, we have a two point eight million dollar budget, just basically general cost increases within park and rec. We did decrease staff and utilities at the community arena, we talked about that. We did increase the capital fund for the arena. Remember, you just made that when we set the rates, bumped that from thirty to fifty thousand a year. We have ten thousand dollars in for updates to the Magnuson Park Shelter, added ten thousand to the disease tree management, kind of in anticipation if, if and when the Emerald Ash Borer shows up in Fergus Falls, so trying to add more money to that budget. And then another five thousand for trail and path maintenance. But otherwise, overall, park and rec stayed pretty stable and not, not really a large increase there. Economic development, there's that hundred and sixty thousand dollar budget we talked about to fund our economic development services. So, and I know that's in the works, you guys are working on that right now. Port Authority, we have a levy of seventy-two thousand seven, up a bit from last year. The Port Authority operations part of the budget is a hundred and six thousand two oh seven. And then we have the CBHH, the Community Behavioral Health Hospital, a budget of two hundred and nineteen thousand nine fifty, completely funded by the state of Minnesota. So those funds come in, we use it to pay all the expenses, and we have a savings account for future capital maintenance on that facility that's funded through the state. Public library, budget of one point one-three-nine million. You can see our major funding sources are our property tax levy and then the regional library aid, up a bit at a hundred and five thousand. We have fourteen thousand, one hundred and sixteen registered users. The circulation was two hundred and twenty-two thousand seven ninety-four. Items checked out in twenty-twenty-four. I know Gail does an annual report for the state every year, and sharing some of that here. And then average visits, visitors a day, four hundred and ten people going through that building. So, Big Wood Event Center. So, long story short, we're increasing the transfer a bit here for twenty-twenty-six. I want to continue to look at this through the fall. We, we probably need some renewed, look at marketing and work, you know, we're just trying to keep up right now. We have very little staff, so some stuff to figure out, but estimating revenues at two hundred and forty-four, but our expenses at three sixty-six. So we've been funding that through the liquor store right now. So certainly a topic that the tax levy committee has talked about, and I know we'll continue to talk through the fall. We have to kind of recharge that and see what we can do there. Okay, capital improvements. This flows from the capital improvement presentation we just had from more engineering at the last, at the last meeting. So, street projects at eight point five million, dairy property at two point eight, that's the four million dollar grant. We closed on the property, got one point two million in. This is the balance to do the railroad crossings and the trail through the property and maybe some other amenities. The RTC preservation funds, we have that like three hundred and ninety thousand left, so I put three eighty, kept that in the budget, that's what we had last year. And then our annual sidewalk program at thirty thousand. So, next slide. So looking at that street project, breaking it down, this is just a summary of what we went through with that capital improvement plan. So looking at the alley, the parking lots, Kavor Avenue as being kind of that first priority, so we have that in here, then Cleveland and Douglas, Pebble Lake Road, which is completely funded through state and federal funding, Highway two-ten bridge replacement, state and federal funding on that one as well. And the DeLagoon Park Road, I know we have a two hundred and ten thousand dollar grant from the DNR on that one. So, just some more detail on capital improvements. We're getting there, I'm almost done, I promise. So enterprise funds, our last section, like I said, I haven't spent a lot of time here, but we have our, next slide should be the liquor store. Certainly, it's a profitable business. Brandon is running a very consistent business. Gross profit percentages always stay the same, even go up just slightly, so keeping a good consistent profit there. The next slide is the refuse fund. You know, this has our collection, recycling, the landfill, everything in that. We're showing operating income below that line, you know, you have your various transfers and whatnot coming to net change, but projecting operating income, again, I'm going to dig into these rates more this fall. Next one is the sewer, same story there. We are maybe down a bit on some revenue there, on leachate that's brought in with, I know the PFOS regulations. I think, Guy, we've had to stop taking some external waste in, right? We're brought in because of PFOS, something we have to work on, but it does impact our revenues then. Now, granted, there will be some less treatment as well, but dig into that this fall as well. Next slide is the water fund, same thing here, and stormwater is after that. And then the final slide for that is the equipment fund, that's our internal fund where we, you know, replace and maintain our equipment. The last slide is next steps. So, this is on your council agenda, 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 I'm losing it, for Monday night, the fifteenth. Again, pointing out this levy, Jim, you're laughing at me. Levy can go down by December, but we can't go above what we set now. Continue to work on that, got to dig into that utility rate review. And then we have to have all this done and to the county by the end of December for the new tax statement, so. All right. Any questions from that? Sorry, it's a fire hose shooting at you.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate the presentation today. I had two questions for you. The first one regarding the capital improvement pie charts, I think it was page seven, and then throughout, various numbers came up. With the session that we've recently had on our capital improvements and our agreement or our plans to go forward with what I understood to be a higher amount of work coming up next year, I expected that the share of capital improvement outlays would be greater. So to see it go from twenty-five to twenty-four on the expenditures surprised me. I thought that would probably jump up to thirty or some other big number, because we're going to be doing all these projects. I think that one of the things you'd explain to us, because some of this ends up getting paid for the following year, and maybe that's the answer, but it just seems like there ought to be more in that piece of the pie.
So, and maybe, let me think out loud here. We have been planning for a more aggressive plan, so we had that in last, in the current year, twenty-twenty-five as well. I'm looking if I can see.
Can I say something, Bill? Is it because of the big percentage of increase on health insurance that that is so big that it makes the other percentages smaller?
You know, that's, could be a part of it, certainly, because a little bit more is going there. However, personnel, that's staying pretty similar. I was going to look at what we had between the two capital improvements for the two So, for instance, for the current budget we're living in, street projects, we had put in seven point four million dollars. We moved that to eight point five, so not a huge increase, because we had, like Cleveland is in both years. Yeah, so we had, you know, Fur Freiberg Roundabout in this year, Junius Shoreview, some parking lot over by the mill. So, and we had Cleveland in as a very large number, where that is, you know, you've refined the estimates. So, in essence, we have about the same in for street improvements, but we have Cleveland in this year at a high number. We're not doing Cleveland this year. It's also in next year, so that's why we're not seeing a big change, if that makes some sense. When you, like you say, the, the payments start the following year. We bond for it, like, like if we go forward with these projects next summer, we'll issue bonds at that time, because that's when we need the money to pay the contractors, the first debt service payments start a year later. So, a budget is an estimate, and we had, we had roughly the same street projects estimated. We're just not doing all of them this year, so.
Okay, thanks. The other thing, I guess, I just wanted to make a comment on, was besides the streets, one of the other things that we seem to hear the most criticism or comment on is in the realm of communication. And so seeing the communication department cut, I think is going to come back to be a problem for us.
I know, we, we talked about that as a tax levy committee, and I know you as a committee, you can pipe into if you want, but we did keep some money in there, so we have some services and whatnot. We had an intern here this summer that did a phenomenal job putting stuff together, kind of gearing us up even for the remainder of the year. So Lynn's got some things already built that are plug and play that we go forward with. So that was, I think, kind of our thought for next year, is do something similar, bring an intern in over the summer. The last two summers, we've had amazing interns here. It's really been a positive experience, so. But, that's, you know, it was an opportunity where we had a, you know, that position and tax levy committee right now choosing not to fill that, so.
Any other questions? Laurel?
I have three of them, a couple are quick. The tree management increase in money for tree management, if that's not used next year, does that fund carry over, or then does it just kind of go away and we just keep increasing until we use it?
So we have not been carrying it forward. I'm glad you brought that up, because that was brought up through the process, and I know Guy would agree he would want to carry that forward. No, we, we mainly use all our funds. I know you manage those well and try to use all you can, but like all our capital outlay, we come to you as a council, ask for the budget adjustment to carry it forward, we do that with unused snow removal. We, I foresee we'll be doing the same thing with the tree management, so that if it's not used, we still use it in that area.
Okay. Next one, we had a presentation by the Humane Society, and there was talk by the council of how much we're using their services if we should be contributing more. Was there, or even, I don't know, any, I don't know where it is in the big numbers here, but where are we at with Humane Society's support, and was that discussed?
We have twelve thousand in the budget. We did not change that in this budget, so it is maintained at the twelve, which we did go up, I think, from six from a prior year. So we went from six to twelve, but we did not change anything for twenty-six.
Okay. Next one is cannabis sales in municipalities can lead, it's been shown by studies, could lead to decreases in alcohol sales. Have we looked at that at all, and the impact that we could see with cannabis coming online?
I have not looked at that. I'm sure Brandon's looking at that. I know his recommendation when we were building that budget is to hold sales flat. So that's kind of what we have done, is just holding them flat. We typically have seen a little bit of an increase over the years. During twenty-twenty, we saw a spike. It came back down to the normal higher levels, but it, it didn't even come down that much after twenty-twenty. We've maintained that, but, so, long answer, no, I haven't looked at that, but I'm sure Brandon is, he watches, I know, the industry, but I have kept sales flat for, from twenty-five to twenty-six.
Scott?
I'm the economic development director, it's one sixty, but actually, it's only like ninety, ninety thousand increase because we had seventy last year in the budget.
Correct. Yep, that one sixty's not an increase. I wanted to point out what we have in the budget for those services.
Any, any other questions, Bill?
I mean, I think from a tax levy perspective, obviously, we were thrown a curve ball with this, you know, health insurance, and we had initially estimated a ten percent increase, and obviously it was another fifteen percent on top of that. So, we, you know, the goal was today to be presenting in, you know, six, six point something, single-digit change, and obviously, we've got some work to do. We've got kind of obviously half a dozen levers that we were looking at, you know, and that was kind of how we could fund marketing for the Big Wood, ultimately going back to the equipment fund, and, and looking at obviously what's, what open positions we've got in terms of, you know, can we push some of those back from filling them? And so, you know, this is, you know, an eight percent obviously is a big impact, and we know that that has to come down, and the goal is to get it, you know, more, more closer to kind of a five than an, than an eight. But, you know, the health insurance alone, you know, added, as you can see, half a million dollars to the city budget overall, not just the levy, but three hundred and fifty thousand to the general levy is, is purely health insurance. The other thing that we're looking at and, and in the process of doing is a review obviously of all insurances, because when you look at Bill's early slide, all the increases are basically to do with insurance, whether it's workers' comp, whether it's general liability, you know, auto, every, every, every insurance we've got is, is what's going up. And, you know, obviously, we have to balance the services that the city provides against the cost to the taxpayer. And, you know, there's a, it's a big increase, and losing money from the energy fund, you know, yes, we're borrowing that from one fund to another, but that, it could be that that becomes a reality that we don't get it. And so, we, we can't base our budget on borrowing money from one part to subsidize another part. So, we acknowledge and appreciate that we've got work to do. We were hopefully in a better position today than we are, but I think we'll get them. So, I don't know, if, Mark, have you got anything to add from a tax levy?
Well, first of all, presentation is very good. Thank you, both to Lynn and you. Yes, there's a great deal of work to be done. I've been, I guess, preaching that for years. These aren't necessarily Fergus Falls's issues. I mean, we have reduced sales tax revenues, we're overburdened by the position that we're in. Heavy, heavy review of the insurance has been recommended and discussed a lot. I think these next couple of years, I, I just hope that the committee and the council understands the position we're in, and asks the citizens just for some, you know, some leniency. We all ran on streets, we all ran on this, but we've got some hurdles in front of us. These next couple of years will be challenging.
Laura, do you have anything to add?
I just want to first thank staff who have worked really hard with us on this. We've had a very engaged tax levy committee this year. I've been, this is my third year on it, and this has definitely been a hard year as we go through this. The last two years, things kind of maybe went in our favor a little bit more, and this year, we've been thrown several curveballs, so I just appreciate the time that everybody has put into this. And then the energy transition, because I know there's probably questions on what exactly happened that everybody's eliminated, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but inflation wasn't accounted for.
Basically, yeah, it's, it's just looking at if your tax capacity grows as a city, you know, then your aid gets eliminated if it hits a certain level. But that, if, let's say you had no new growth in the city and just all the properties in the city just all grew the same, and if you didn't change your levy, nothing would change. It's just your value is more, it's allocated the same, but that increased general growth, not new growth, can trigger that, and that's what it looks like is what the trigger is. Now, as I'm looking at some preliminary numbers, we do have new growth in Fergus Falls, Now, as I'm looking at some preliminary numbers, we do have new growth in Fergus Falls, but certainly it's this general growth that I think is kicking that out. So, I was thinking on the drive-in this morning, I wanted to talk, I'm so glad you brought that up because I forgot about that. But, yeah, that's the trigger, and in these other cities as well. Now, if you've got some new industry where, you know, bam, you know, all this new growth, well then it makes sense. You don't need that transition as much, but if it's just your general growth in the city, we still need that transition.
Yeah, I think this was basically, the energy transition was to, with the Hoot, Hoot Lake Plant closing and that obviously having a negative revenue impact to, to the city levy, this grant from the state was meant to blend that over time so that you, you had the opportunity to build the tax base and grow the tax base, and, and one would replace the other, as, as obviously as the Otter Tail Power Hoot Lake Plant disappeared from the tax roll, you know, the grant would, would basically subsidize until you, you've built new industry, commercial housing that would replace that. And as, as kind of mentioned, it didn't take into account the fact that inflation added to that basis. So, on paper, it looks like you replaced it, but you didn't. So.
Good point.
Your Honor, with that same, on that same topic, we've talked in the past too, as real estate values go down, I don't know how often the county goes back and reevaluates this on a, on a residential side and the commercial side, but we're seeing other communities, obviously the higher intensities, the west coast, the south coast, valuations of a home have gone from, you know, let's just say 10 to 8. What happens then? I mean, then we're going to lose, you know, if you will, this tax base. So it's kind of a catch-22 if, if the residential and commercial properties, based on private, private sales go down. I don't know how fast that would be reflected at the county level.
Yeah, I don't know.
Go ahead, Sean.
We, we assess 20% of, reassess 20% of the property in the county each year. Every five years, your county should, your property should be assessed.
Yeah, so to repeat, the county will look at these properties 20% a year, and at, at the end of five years, we've, in essence, caught up. It's always a rolling ball, but that's the next thing that we need to be concerned about moving forward is a reduction in these values. Billing costs have obviously exceeded, you know, the public's ability.
All right, with that, we need a motion to bring this to Monday night's council meeting. Somebody would care to make that?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Laura. Would somebody care to second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim.
Good job, Bill.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. And the motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is Airport Maintenance and Operations Agreement. Andrew Brenseth, recommendation to the council to approve the Airport Maintenance and Operations Grant Agreement. Aye, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Members, trying to catch us up here a little bit. This is an agreement that you see every two years in front of you. This is related, as the mayor mentioned, to the airport maintenance and operations. We have an agreement with Sky Crew Services, who was before us this morning, to provide the snow removal and lawn care and all the other maintenance at the airport. We pay them a monthly amount, and then we're reimbursed 75% of those costs by the state of Minnesota, which is the formula they use, which is what's spelled out in this agreement before you today. This agreement covers fiscal years '26 and '27, just shy of $71,000 in each of those fiscal years, for a total grant with the state of Minnesota reimbursement of just shy of $142,000 over those two years. With that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Scott. Would somebody care to second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions, Andrew? If not, roll call. Oh, I mean, sorry. Yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. The motion is approved. Consent agenda, good for everybody, straightforward, 140 grand from the state of Minnesota. And the next item is number five, the Tobacco Ordinance Amendments. Andrew Brenseth, recommendation to the council to direct the city attorney to draft amendments to City Code Chapter 111, tobacco. Andrew?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Members, just bringing this topic before you, to see if there's an appetite to move forward with this. Recently met with members of the Police Department, the Building Department, our Community Development Departments to talk about what, what we want to do with the tobacco ordinance in light of all the conversations we've had around cannabis. Also, you know, we've seen a, a business that's opening right on the doorstep of a, of a preschool, elementary school, which is really what probably pushes this conversation to the forefront. But basically what staff, after our discussion, is, is looking at doing is including buffer zones for smoke shops, and we're going to define smoke shops, I believe, as a business that derives 75% or more of their income from tobacco sales. So, the intent here is not to cover convenience stores or gas stations. It would be smoke shops that exist to sell tobacco and other products that are related to that space. So we're looking at having the same buffers as we do with the cannabis, which is 1,000 feet from a public or private school, and then 500 feet from a daycare residential treatment facility, and then the public parks that have tractions for minors. I'm not going to define that today. The other kind of piece to this that the PD would like to see is the requirement for background checks from both the store manager and the store owner, which we do require for cannabis, alcohol, cannabis and alcohol, and would like to do so for tobacco. Again, this would not impact convenience stores or gas stations. It would simply be facilities that are directly related to just tobacco sales. So, that's the, the conversation we had, and wondering if the council would like to move in this direction. If so, we can do that by directing the city attorney to draft those amendments and get it before you for a first reading. If there's questions, we're certainly happy to, to discuss those or take them back to kind of our working group on this.
How many smoke shops do we have now?
There's two that are currently operating, and then a third that is not operational yet. They don't have what they need to be operational.
Andrew, can, Your Honor, what's the reason for the background check on tobacco? And that's just, and then you pick on the tobacco people, but you won't pick on the convenience store selling the same exact thing, in a sense? That's my question.
Yeah, that's a good question, Your Honor. Councilmember Rachel's, I have to choose my words carefully. PE feels like that space is more vulnerable for activities that aren't necessarily on the up and up, and so would like to ensure that people that are operating in that space are, are worthwhile, trustworthy, upstanding members of the community. As far as, you know, like gas stations go, those typically have a very good management system in place. They have controls, they have oftentimes a company that, you know, those individuals are working for that may do background checks as they hire them for employment opportunities. Typically, what you see in these smoke shops is owner-operator, very small kind of, kind of thing, so. Coming from a recommendation from PD and, and obviously trying to choose my words carefully on that. Thank you.
Also too, Andrew, and I know very little about this, I just heard a little bit of bleep here and there. There's, there's actually, they call it an opioid that was being sold out of some of these smoke shops. I forget the number, what the letters are of it, but it was coming out of China, I believe. And, you know, is this being taken in account with this stuff? I don't know much about it, but does this have something to do with that?
It, it may. And again, I'll choose my words very carefully today, it may. We have seen, over the, the past handful of years, products that shouldn't be sold in some of these stores, sold in some of these stores. We have a fairly comprehensive law enforcement present at times, presence at times in this space, and we just, if we can get ahead of some of those issues, I think it's going to be in everybody's best interest.
I would agree 100% on that.
How would this impact, if you go to 1,000 feet and 500 feet, the smokes, shops that we have, how does that impact them?
Yeah, so the way I would respond to that, Your Honor, is that smoke shops that have the certificate of occupancy and are operating today would be grandfathered in unless they were to make a change. If they are not open today and don't have a certificate of occupancy and these rules are put in place, these new rules would apply to them and anybody going forward.
Would the same go with the background checks, though?
Yes, if, Your Honor, Councilmember Jobe, if the business is not operational or not allowed to be operational, anybody that starts new would have to face the background check from the date of the effectiveness of the ordinance going forward.
So if the manager of an existing smoke shop changes, that person would then need a background check?
That's correct, yep.
If we're having police presence issues at the current ones, are we really solving any problems by doing this because they're not subject to it?
I think you're stopping problems from growing, and then you're able to focus on how to manage existing or, or past problems. I, I don't want to paint a picture today that every single store that's operational is out of compliance or doing a bad job. I don't think that would be a fair statement, but, you know, certainly we've seen some, some areas in this space where things haven't been by the books.
With that, would somebody care to make a motion to bring this to the council on Monday evening? Thank you, Al. Would somebody care to second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott.
Just a one question.
Correct.
This, maybe getting into the details just a little bit, but I just don't know the current rules regarding these types of places. Are there age limits for people to be able to enter these stores or no? Are they open to any age, or are they adult-only, 18-plus, 21-plus? Do you know?
Yeah, I think, Your Honor, Councilmember Quomby, with the recent state law change of 21, it is 21 years to, to go into the store, 21 years of age.
And to just out of interest, does this really, we just need to direct the, the city attorneys, and does this need to go to the council on Monday evening?
A motion directing the city attorney to draft the ordinance, we're hoping to have the first draft of the ordinance on Monday night as well.
Yeah, so you'll see the motion on the consent agenda and then minutes later on the ordinance as well. Have it ready to be introduced.
Thank you.
Does this have to go to Planning Commission?
Your Honor, Councilmember Killian, it does not. I asked that question of Rolf because it's not changing the zoning code. It's specific to our section on tobacco. It does not have to go to the Planning Commission.
With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. None, the motion is approved, so it will go in the sequence as described. The next item on the agenda is Aquatic Center, but I think, were we skipping that?
We want to get all the expenses accounted for.
Right, okay. Sorry, Bridget, you'll have to get up early again another morning.
We're up at all.
But all in all, it was a successful, a successful year, but we wanted to get a full picture. The next item then on the agenda is Surplus Vehicles, Len Taylor, recommendation to the council to surplus unit number one and authorize its disposal.
Thank you, Your Honor.
It's a famous Windstar van.
Yeah, we've heard some about it already this morning, but yeah, it's a 2001 Ford Windstar. Been in service 24-plus years now, and it's only got 81,000 miles on it, so it's lived a pretty easy life and has been pretty maintenance-free, but it didn't present well as a courtesy vehicle due to its age. But anyway, we're just looking to surplus it and have you authorize its disposal. I mentioned in the memo that it would be posted on GovDeals, but I learned of auction sale that's to be held out at the I-94 Speedway coming up this fall, so we may place it on that consignment and auction, rather.
All right, thank you. Would somebody care to make that motion? Thank you, Scott. Would somebody care to second it?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Motion is approved. We've just put that on the consent agenda, I think. Thank you. And then the next item is Surface Water Inlet Protection Plan, SWIP. Len Taylor, recommendation to the council to approve the SWIP report.
Thank you, Your Honor. This was presented to the Committee of the Whole on July 16th, and just left it open at that point for the council to digest the document, and we're looking now for a resolution to adopt the document, which puts in place some measures to protect the inlet to our water treatment plant directly at the waters of Hoot and Wright Lake and upstream on the Otter Tail River. And we do have Dan Disrude from the Department of Health here and Chad Lindgren, who, we've worked on this document for over the last two years, and just looking for a resolution to approve it.
If somebody would care to make the motion?
I'll do that.
Thank you, Laurel. Would somebody care to second it?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions or anything for Len or any of the people from DNO? SWIP, wonderful plans. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. The motion is approved, everybody good. Wouldn't that be on the consent agenda?
Sure. I just wanted to point out one comment. I didn't quite get a chance there, if you don't mind.
Sure.
As I looked through the details in this, I thought it was significant to at least mention, you mentioned this was two years in the making. There were several names of people, not of us, but of the other departments, like Minnesota Department of Health and the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and others. Scott Trader was one of the names that I recognized because he's done some work with the city on the Lake Alice Water Quality Projects. He and others spent a great deal of time, and in the notes at the end, you can see their names on many, many edits. And so this isn't something that just kind of got bumped along and kicked along without review. There was really quite a lot of time spent on this plan, and I would commend the work of the different agencies and their people and the work that they did. So, thank you to them.
Thank you, Scott. And with that, from an announcement point of view, obviously 4:30, September 15th, 4:30 PM, there'll be a port authority meeting followed at 5:30 by a council meeting. September 29th, there'll be a town hall meeting. It's been posted, so a quorum of council members may attend. October the 1st will be a Committee of the Whole. Activities that are taking place this weekend, it will be dandelion days on Saturday between 1 and 4, as September is Mental, Mental Health Awareness Month, and as we all probably know, of someone that did commit suicide, it's, mental health is, is a growing, a growing health issue. And the other thing that's happening in town this week is Wissoda Days, and we will call upon our resident mechanic for Wissoda to give an update.
Car owner, car owner, actually. I'd just like to welcome Wissoda Racing Association of Fergus Falls and all the people with it to enjoy our city and to enjoy all the amenities we have in this town. And if you drive out there, you'll, you'll see that there's a city amongst a city out there. It's, I think there's about 300 cars and 500 campers, give or take. So that's quite a few people. Plus, there'll be, I think on Saturday night, there'll be 6,000 people on average every year in the grandstand, so welcome all, hope they all enjoy it. Please, the traffic was a little hectic yesterday and probably won't be quite as bad today, but tomorrow, they get bored out there, so they wander, and they'll have fun, and they'll get a look at our city, so it'd be a great time out there, so.
What time do races start on Saturday?
Every day, the race starts at 5 o'clock. On the Saturday, race is 5 o'clock, but the race, I think they call it the Parade of Champions. They put every race car that's qualified for the race on the racetrack, which would be about 160. So it'll be really interesting to see. It's kind of cool to watch it. They have the cars all, there are four or five abreast and they go around the racetrack. It's pretty nice.
I encourage them to go downtown.
Come on downtown. You'll see a lot more UTVs in town because they are legal, so just be careful, those are, but there's, there'll be a lot of them around.
Thank you.
There's a concert, too, right? There's a concert?
Oh, there's a concert tomorrow night at 10 o'clock, I believe, or 10:30.
And they rented our stage.
Yeah, they rented the stage. Yeah.
Jim?
There's been talk for years on Walk of Flags, and there is no more spaces for Walk of Flags. They are opening up 200 more spaces. So if people want to get a Walk of Flag for one of their veterans, they will be able to do it. The holes will not go in until they get to 200, though, but you can pre-arrange having a flag for a member of your family or, or somebody that was in the military. And the price is going up from 150 to $200 for the flag because of the increase in what it costs to get the flags and drill the holes and everything to put them in. They will be increasing the number of flags for Walk of Flags.
Do you know who people contact?
I've got it at home. Actually, I got it in my truck.
So contact Jim.
Maybe at least start with like the VFW or somewhere like that. Yes, yep.
So.
One, one point, Your Honor, in regards to the town hall meetings, the conversations in the past have been that 5 o'clock's too early. It would be, I think, in the best interest of the town hall meeting, start at 6:30 as it has been done in the past. I would like the council to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, the meeting is adjourned.